Lovely. Actually good.
You find yourself dinner before you...
It's up to you that I don't mind it either way when I get up. And where's the remote? No, I didn't. I haven't touched it. I'm just, uh... Will you tell me which one was? I'm in your head. Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's just a tiny... And the other one? I will leave it there and not pass it on. No, you must leave it right back.
Hmm? It's red. It's on. He'll make his way in. Oh, he's right there. Okay. Just waiting for our recorder to get back into the room, folks.
Yes, please. Thank you, ma'am.
Mercy Pacon. All right, resume the regular meeting of council for Monday, February 23rd. Just marginally after seven. Looking for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Public participation time, so anybody within the audience that might have something to say to council, this is your time to step up. I thought we were gonna get a speaker. We're just getting, changing seats. Anybody? Seeing none then, folks, I will move on. Mayor's message, just a couple of announcements for this evening, folks. One is an invite, actually, from the Greater Victoria Festival Society. They're launching their website and they are having an event on Sunday, March the first, from 5:30 till 8:30 PM at the Yates Street Tap House, as they launch their first website and offer a sneak preview of what lies ahead. They were incorporated under Society's Act on March of 1992. Their purpose is to engage in any activity that is beneficial to the community as a whole while developing and promoting civic spirit and pride with the creation of festivals, parades, and special events. So mark your calendars on that one. And the other one, of course, is Wednesday, on the 25th. It is Pink Shirt Day, which was first brought to us a number of years ago in, as a marker towards bullying in schools, workplaces, homes, over internet, social media. We've seen a lot of those kinds of things as of late. So in recognition of stamping that out, it's a Pink Shirt Day. So councillor Martin, you better be in pink.
I will be getting my wardrobe out. Pink pants.
There you go. No, it's a Pink Shirt Day.
Oh, shirt, sorry.
Anyways, folks. Yeah, but please wear pants. I think that is all that I've got in my notice list today, so thanks, folks, for coming and listening. Looking to adopt a set of minutes from the regular meeting of council on February the 10th?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, sure?
Item 7.3, Bylaw 1563, First and Second Readings, reads that the motion was carried when, in fact, it was defeated. An OCP vote needs four votes of council, and the vote was three to two, therefore, it was defeated.
I'm just gonna get to, is that the one that's on our agenda for tonight?
Yes, that was the one that's on for reconsideration.
Okay, so...
I just want the minutes to read correctly.
But I think the minutes stay the same as per the meeting of that night, and that's why it's back before us?
That is not explained in the agenda, then. It's back before us because we're considering something about sewer... The actual fact is the first reading was defeated and therefore the second reading should never have happened. So I would like the minutes to reflect that due to council and staff error, this should actually read defeated. And I have no problem with reconsidering it. That's perfectly within the mayor's purview, but I want the minutes to read correctly.
Procedurally, Mercy, do you have the answer on that?
I believe procedurally what will happen is, because that is what happened at the meeting, there will be actually a text box that'll be inserted in the minutes correcting that.
Thank you.
Well, that suffice? Looking for then, call the question on those, adoption of the minutes. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Looking to receive two sets of minutes, Heritage Commission for January 14th, and Protective Services on January 21st.
Move for seat, your worship.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? We have three presentations before us this evening. The first one will be Kim Carter, who is Ombuds Person, Office of the Ombuds Person, roles and responsibilities. She did provide us with a bit of a handout, and I think there's a PowerPoint you've got going. Kim?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Hamilton, and thank you to you and council for the opportunity to come and talk to you briefly this evening about the role of the Office of the Ombuds Person. What I would say is, I've taken this opportunity because I know the changes are such that you will be here dealing with issues for four years now, so longer than before. So what I wanted to do was just briefly highlight to council and to some of the senior staff, who I see are here, the role of the Office of the Ombuds Person. And the first thing I would say is, there has been a long-term relationship in British Columbia between the Office of the Ombuds Man, as it was previously, and Ombuds Person now, and local government. For more than 20 years, there's been jurisdiction within the Office of the Ombuds Person to receive concerns and complaints about local government. People who come to us, the complaints are treated confidentially, and it says here, "free of charge." Of course, like anything else, it's really courtesy of the taxpayer from the provincial pocket that pays for it. And I think the one thing that I would say is very important is to realize that when one person comes to us, if it's an issue that affects many people, then part of our mandate is to work to resolve it for everyone who's been adversely affected. We are, as it says here, impartial and independent, and so we are not advocates for the complainant, and we are not advocates for the authority such as the local government. Our history in British Columbia is that we have been around since 1979, and as I mentioned before, our jurisdiction was extended to local governments in 1995. We deal with about 8,000 inquiries and complaints a year, and the focus of what we do as an independent office of the legislature is administrative fairness. So that's not, in terms of what we look at, we're not focused on the, if I can put it this way, political wisdom of your decisions. That's for the electors to comment on. But our focus is really on the standard of conduct that can be expected by agencies, not just local governments, but provincial ministries, crown corporations, health authorities, school boards, and other institutions that fall within our jurisdiction. The standard of conduct that people can expect from those kinds of public authorities in a democratic society. So things such as transparent decision-making, the proper application of rules, properly authorized policies and practices, and fair and respectful treatment. Although most of the work and most of the issues we deal with involve provincial ministries, crown corporations, and provincial commissions and boards, about 8% of the work we do involves local governments. And I thought you might be interested on the recurring issues that come to our office and have come over the past 20 years. This gives you a little bit of general understanding, I hope. You will see the second one is bylaw enforcement. I like to say it's bylaw enforcement and/or non-enforcement. The complaints that can come to us can be in either direction, too vigorous or too little. And most of the issues we deal with are individual complainants coming to us about their individual situation. Our approach is consultative and resolution-oriented. If we see that there is a problem that falls within our mandate and we think that there has been some unfairness, then we'll identify that. We'll provide notice to the authority, the local government, and we'll try and resolve it. So when I talk about administrative fairness, sometimes people say, "Well, what would that really mean?" So I put up one of our cases that we've dealt with. You'll also find it in the newsletter. I've given you a copy of. And it perhaps illustrates a recurring issue. This is actually a regional district issue where it occurred and resulted from some perhaps excess of activity by one of the staff members of the regional district. Happily, nothing was irretrievably done. You'll see we managed to work in that happily the dog, who was the subject of this, survived and was reunited with his owner. Our original description didn't cover that very critical issue, and that was a question that I kept getting asked. Essentially, this was a complaint that came to us about really unreasonable treatment and unauthorized action. And the local government had agreed to investigate and report to the person, but then had ended up delaying this. We looked at the issue of unreasonable delay, which is one of the administrative unfairness issues that we regularly look at. And indeed, it turned out here that there had been unreasonable delay. In response, the regional district wrote an apology to the person and provided the results of their investigation. But in addition, the regional district looked at improving their bylaw and developing a stricter policy and procedure. So it did not only benefit the individual who came with the complaint to us, but other people in the regional district from the improvements that resulted. So most of our work is individual cases, but we do do something called systemic investigations, which are broad reviews of areas. And one that I think perhaps will be of particular interest to you is the work we've done on open meetings. I've given you a copy of our Open Meetings Guide. This, again, was a recurring issue that came to our office, and rather than simply trying to deal with them one by one, we looked at the complaints and said, "Is there something we can do, a best practices guide that we can put out that will help avoid some of the problems that have come forward?" And you'll see the results in our Open Meeting Guide. It's a very short report. Our longest systemic report on seniors' care was 446 pages, so you'll be grateful for 24. And there's a one-page checklist at the end for those who really like to focus. So that, because I don't want to take up any more of your time unless you have some questions for me, is what I wanted to do, is to present that. If we can just have the last slide up again, I don't know if I need to do something. You will see our website and our 1-800 number there. Everything that I provided to you is, of course, available on our website, and people can contact us through the 1-800 number. So thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. And just to highlight the options that are available, if people cannot work things out to their satisfaction, they don't feel there's been a fair and reasonable resolution, they can come to our office, and if we identify that we should become involved, we do so and work on a consultative and resolution-oriented basis.
Thanks, Kim. Any questions by council? Councillor Martin?
Yeah, thank you. Does the Ombuds Spudsmen have any financial powers? So, for example, the reason what I'm thinking of is, let's say, for example, there's a complaint about bylaw, that bylaw's been giving them fines that they don't think is appropriate. They bring it to you, we found that those are inappropriate fines. Do you have any ability to order a municipality to pay that back? Or is that just a suggestion?
Well, it's something between a suggestion and an order. So I was talking with the mayor previously, and in my past life, I spent 30 years in the Canadian forces, so I was pretty good at figuring out what orders were. And part of that time, I was military judge and chief military judge, so I could also figure out how to make orders in that way. In the Office of the Ombuds Person, what we do is we make recommendations. And so in terms of, are they suggestions? I like to think of them as something more than that, that the thoroughness of our investigations, and we have the power to get all the necessary information, all the documents. If necessary, we can call witnesses to come and speak to us. So we get all the information. We do a rigorous analysis, and I hope we are persuasive with practical recommendations to change. Ultimately, however, the power I have is to make a recommendation and also to speak out publicly about it. And I have found that, for the most part, most agencies, most authorities, it's the persuasiveness of your analysis. But sometimes those who aren't persuaded by your analysis are prepared to take a second look at things when they have to think about how they're gonna explain it publicly. So I would say the power is, the power, I like to say, of light and sound. We can shine a light on things and we can speak up about it, and it can be quite persuasive. That combined with the fact that really we are impartial. We're not on one side or the other. So one of the greatest strengths is you get a fresh pair of eyes looking at it that isn't entrenched on one side of an issue or another side of an issue. And sometimes, just by us asking pertinent questions, people come to their own reconsiderations.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Kim, again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And on that little brochure, folks, is the numbers and contact information that she provided on that last slide. Moving on then, I think number two in our presentation is Westside Solutions, Christine Houghton? And the backup guy in the back there, Dave?
I never go anywhere without my backup singers. Sorry, we're technical. So thank you very much for having us here today. This is at the request of the co-chair of the Select Committee, Mayor Hamilton, to bring you up to speed on some of the things we've been doing with Westside Solutions to date. So just to walk you through what we're, where we're going on this, I'm just gonna give you a little bit of background of where this all started and the principles that we've all operated under, some of the strategic objectives we have, the process that we've gone through, which is pretty rigorous to date, and most importantly, where we are now, both technically and on a public engagement, and where we plan to go with the next steps. And at the end, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have. So when we started back in, this was in June 2014, the communities on the west side, on the west shore, were quite concerned about how things were progressing or not progressing, as it were, at the CRD as it came to dealing with our wastewater and potential resource recovery issues. So in an ad hoc and informal setting, we got together, we're engaged, they engaged myself and my colleague David Laws to start looking at what some of the solutions might be. And one of the first things that we agreed to and thought was incredibly important was to look at what principles we were going to operate under. I can't stress enough how critical this has been about us moving forward, because as you can understand, with four municipalities and a first nation, we're not always 100% on the same page, but there is agreement around the principles that we're operating under, and it has allowed us, in what I think a pretty short period of time, to move this forward in a very positive and productive way. Further to that, when we were becoming more formalized under the Select Committee, so that's the Westside Solutions is the short form of it, but it's the Westside Water Treatment and Resource Recovery Select Committee of the Core Area Liquid Waste Management Committee of the Capital Regional District. So you can understand why we shortened the title a little bit, because it was a bit of a mouthful. But we looked at the strategic objectives that we wanted to achieve moving forward and make sure that we adhere to these as we talk to the public and we engage technical experts. So really importantly, that we wanted to be clear and concise in the information that we were making readily available to the public. We wanted to work, deliver a thorough evaluation, not come at it with a bias or a preconceived notion of what the answer was, but go forward in a transparent and also unbiased way. Really have a conversation with communities, like a real conversation with communities moving forward. And really, bottom line is, we wanted to be able to deliver our recommendations that were both economically, well, I'm gonna say actually triple bottom line, economically, environmentally, and socially responsible and beneficial for the communities that this would service. So the process that we undertook, and again, we have a structure set up that is unique under the Capital Regional District structure. And I, and in my experience, and I used to be with the Ministry of Environment and manager of local government at one point in my career, I think it's quite unique throughout the province, that this is truly a collaboration between both municipal staff, band staff, and Capital Regional District staff. So there is a staff steering committee that does look at and recommend things going forward to the Select Committee, that has an equal vote on all those, all those members have an equal vote. And should there be a dissenting opinion, which there has yet to be, there is opportunity of that going forward to the Select Committee as well. So the process that we went through was, we didn't feel there was enough time to do single-track, to do a public engagement, then go technical, that we had to do a dual-track to move this thing forward as quickly as we could. So on the technical side, we put forward a request for technical information. We're evaluating, we looked at evaluating some potential site information. We are evaluating or working with Mr. Baxter over here, who's been key in this process to, and quite, quite key in this process, but looking at some of the things that Colwood is doing on its singular initiative that's going forward. Looked at the reports that have been made available through the Capital Regional District and CETA, and supported development of public information. That's what the Technical Committee did, is so all the things we were taking out to the public have been vetted through the people who have a technical expertise. On the public engagement side, we had six open houses. The first official one, we had a pilot one in December that was in Songhees, but the first official one was here in January. It was very well attended, I'm happy to say. We put information up at community information boards. We have a website that went from zero to being interactive within two weeks, which I think is record time for any government entity to get a website up and live. And we had an online survey that went forward. So that was quite critical in starting to get that feedback from the public. And at this point, I actually do also want to recognize Sandra Russell of your staff, who has been, again, key in being able to deliver all these products in really quick time. We were officially constituted in November. This all happened very quickly as we started to move forward. It was very impressive. And I just want to thank Colwood for offering up two of your best staff members to help move this project along. Oh, I don't have that in here. Anyway, where we are now, so we've had, we've had the RFT out there. It has closed. We've had, in various iterations, about, we've had about 10 full submissions, but there are different components of it. So there's about 20 different things that we're evaluating right now going forward. We're supporting the survey and review of the survey work that's going on, on the technical side as well. And we're also developing further information for the public. So as you can understand, the short period of time that we had to go forward, we did create some fact sheets and that, but there is an ever-hungry public that wants more information, and quite frankly, needs more information if they're going to be part of the conversation and have a real contribution. So we are evaluating for the six open houses. We're trying to collate the information from the survey. Obviously, some of it's statistical, and it's quite succinct in how that is going forward. But some of the open-ended questions, we're trying to do, we are trying to collate it in a way that it's easy for people to digest. We are going to share it. We're not going to filter any of the information, but we're just trying to put it into a package that people can read it easily in the categories that's there, but the raw data will be available. We continue, we continuing to engage the public right now as we're evaluating that through social and mainstream media, obviously, direct contact with citizens through municipal and band offices and all that. And of course, the Select Committee meetings are open to the public, and they certainly have been in attendance. And again, different from usual courses with the Capital Regional District processes, we are rotating where the Select Committee meetings are, in municipal halls like this one. We've had a meeting here and at the Songhees First Nation, so that's, that's good. This is a slide I was actually looking for. So we had 340-some-odd responses to the survey. That just gives you a snapshot of where people were from who answered it. We have some more raw data that hasn't been properly analyzed yet, but you can see Colwood, right after Squimalt, in the number of people who were participating. You can see from the responses that there, it's certainly Colwood, pardon me, Squimalt, Colwood, View Royal, and Langford, which are the four sponsoring municipalities that we're working for. Certainly, everyone did a good job of engaging their citizens to get them out. And then Victoria and Lang, pardon me, and Sanich as well. Songhees is a much smaller entity. Songhees is a much smaller entity, but they did, they did as well get quite, they did get interest from their membership and their community to, to respond to that.
Just have that slide, just Central.
Central Sanwich, so we listed, we listed all the 13 municipalities in the CRD. We asked other questions too, things I found interesting, like, were you on septic or sewer? Or didn't you know? And, and three people didn't know, and I, those are the things I always find fascinating, how do you not know? But anyway, they didn't. So, so Central Sanwich, and those are the, the core area, the Capital Regional District municipalities, or districts. There's just some, excuse me, some pictures from the open houses. This is actually from the first, the pilot we did at Songhees. We're, the, the boards, that we call them, the information boards, were really at a high level, trying to engage people, not just those people who have spent time looking at or looking into this issue, but people who had never really been engaged before, and we wanted really to encourage more people to become engaged in the process. So next steps, which are quite critical in moving forward, is that we're developing a map of potential sites for wastewater treatment, where that could possibly be, because ultimately there will have to, we will be building a facility or some facilities, or however the process turns out. So we need to look at this, again, the dual track simultaneously. We're looking at the responses from the RFTI, and you can imagine, it is a pretty overwhelming job when you look at the number of responses that we got for, going forward. That being said, we're really excited that we got this many responses to something that was not a binding, this wasn't an RFP, there's no guarantee anyone gets any further contract or further work out of it. We were actually, we were going to look at what's out there, what can the market provide, what do we think is possible, and, and, and how can we be more future-looking as we go forward? We want to look at the wastewater flows, the original process, we've heard particularly from a couple of communities on the west side, notably Langford and Songhees, that they didn't feel that the flow estimate that we're giving in were correct, so we're going to ground truth that, so we're treating the wastewater we need to treat. And we're going to continue to contribute and verify the public information that we're going to be giving to the public on the technical side. On the public engagement side, we are analyzing the feedback of the survey, we're going to release the results, as I said. We're going, we're in the process right now of designing round two, and round two is going to be a series of round tables. If you took the survey, you could self-identify if someone who wanted to participate in those surveys, we had over 100 people put up their hand, pardon me, surveys in the round table, put up their hands saying they wanted to be active participants. We're trying to design what that looks like, so it can be the best information in, to have the best conversation we can at the round tables, and then bring that back out so we can utilize that information and help inform decision-makers for people like you who will ultimately be making the decisions moving forward. We want to also have a wrap-up session of the round tables that will be broadcast in some way or another, so again, we can engage as many human beings, as many citizens as we can, in the west side and across the Capital Regional District, to be honest, in looking at some of the things that we've come up with. We want to continue to produce and promote materials to inform the public. It's really getting citizen participation in democracy is entirely critical in this. And we, and to do that, we're going to, we're identifying all manner of media and venues and that, to be able to get those kind of, that kind of information out. So there's actually supposed to be a thank you slide, and it went, oh, there it is. So, I didn't want you to think I was rude. So, thank you very much, I'm happy to answer some questions, or comments from anyone who's participated. Madam Mayor?
Good, I'll open it up to the table. Counsel, anybody? Counselor Dave?
Just wondering when the next round of open houses is likely to occur.
We, we're done with the open houses, but the information is still available.
Round table.
Oh, the round tables?
Mm-hmm.
We're entirely hopeful that we will be starting the round tables by the, about this time in March, and moving forward at that point in time, with the wrap-up session being late April, early May, that will be the larger venue. So again, we've had our first real planning meeting last Friday, we have a second one this Friday, the technical team's also working vigorously to get the information to feed in, so those are, those are tentative dates right now, because we want to make sure that we get it right, because if we get it wrong, we're in trouble.
Right, so there'd be more, there'd be more technical information shared at the round tables, and that's in March, ending up in April?
And that technical information will be available on websites and all that. We will make any information we have within the guidelines of the Privacy and Freedom of Information and Privacy Act available as widely as we possibly can.
And just, you spoke of the triple bottom line, does your triple bottom line also include long-term costs for the system, rather than just the upfront cost?
It is, it is a question that we have to, the short answer is yes. What is the long-term and what is long-term is not an answer that I can readily, it's not the conversation that hasn't been fully had yet, but it's one of the things I think we want to talk about at the long, at the round tables. How long of a time for a payoff is, do people think is reasonable for whatever we're investing in? It's a good question.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Martin?
So we have the Westside Solutions, and you have the Eastside Solutions, and when you bring the two of them together, what if those solutions are counter to each other?
Well, I
What are the steps from there?
What are the steps from there? Well, I'm more of an optimist. I gave this presentation last week to the Eastside Committee, they have all the materials that we've developed, we have not held anything back. We'll be working closely together, and we continue to continue to have conversations to try and make sure that we're not going off in completely different directions, because we are very aware that at some point, there needs to be a conversation to knit things back together. So, I'm optimistic that we will move, if not down the same track, down parallel tracks and not veer too far away from each other. Anything that's completely off and left field or whatever, I think has to be a conversation at the larger core area committee, but as long as we continue talking to each other, we will know if we're starting to veer off in different directions.
Okay. Just, well, just as a follow-up question, I mean, I struggle with that, because for example, if you're, if you're dealing with Oak Bay, Oak Bay has, you know, their infrastructure is not just the sewer, but obviously all the pipes that are failing and the fact that their drainage water goes into it. So I could see that they, they would bring to the east side a far drastically different recommendation than the west side would. So how, how do you knit those two back together?
Well, and it's true what you say about Oak Bay. If you look at the, the motion passed by the Core Area Liquid Waste Management Committee, they, it was very clear, and it was passed unanimously by the entire committee, put forward by Counselor Young from the city of, Director Young was from the city of Victoria, that each municipality needed to be responsible for its own wastewater and the costs that incur there. So, I think there's a solution that Oak Bay has to find for its ionized problems and other, it's, it's all those kind of things. And I think as, that conversation has to continue, has to be part of the bigger conversation moving forward. We have to find a solution to that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Christine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, there's still lots of work to, to move on, so.
A little bit.
All right, we'll see you later, thanks. And, next proposal or demo, or, uh, presentation is David Stotts with the Westshore Performing Arts Centre Project. And you are on a PowerPoint as well.
I think he is talking about. It has to be a little, it's breezy here. Your worship, members of council, thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you the results of our work over the last year. It's been a great privilege and honor to, to work on this very interesting project, which has to do with Colwood's opportunity to create a building. Just sorry about the name tags, it was warping my little brain, I'm sorry.
I got to be 40, I was asking all those questions because then I wouldn't get in trouble. Man, I was starting to feel like
You see before you, ladies and gentlemen, a picture, an artist's conception of what a performing arts centre might look like. It would be a wonderful opportunity to provide a place for our local performers to perform. It would be a great place for regional performers, and I'm thinking particularly of the Suk Philharmonic Orchestra and Kaleidoscope Theatre, which are two of the people who have been involved in this concept now for many years. And there's no reason this building could not be attractive to international performers as well. Now, your worship, you had a letter mentioning festivals. I think festivals are a great idea. Can you imagine the Colwood Annual International Festival in the winter of hot jazz? The summer Colwood Festival of ballet? It's not about just concerts, it's about creating an economic engine, an economic magnet for, 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 for building our city. At the end of this presentation, I'm going to ask you to provide, or to agree to provide both tangible and intangible support to the work of this committee towards building this facility. Now, the next slide talks a little bit about the building. Colwood funded a development study beginning in 2012, presented in March of 2013, and to produce that report, our consultant Rick Schick, who is with us here today, went and talked and got all kinds of expressions of interest from all kinds of performing organizations, such as the Suk Phil, Kaleidoscope Theatre, Canadian College Performing Arts, the end is, the list is endless. And their expressions of interest were drafted then and changed into functional specifications. For example, we know that the Suk Philharmonic wants a stage 60 feet wide and 40 feet deep, functional specifications. And so Rick took all this information and figured out what, how many rooms we needed, and how big those rooms were, and how those rooms could be cobbled together into a building. Now that report, by the way, is on the website, and anyone can have access to it. In addition to collecting those spaces into a building, Rick looked at an operating plan and estimated the economic impact, which is $16 million in construction, and ongoing $3.2 million in economic activity associated with that building, and the working in it. And it's useful to note that Colwood has been involved in this thing since the summer of 2012. There are some Johnny Come Latelys who are, have got some expressions of interest gathered in January of this year, whereas Colwood gathered those in the summer of 2012. Your leadership is very important to me and the rest of the members of the committee. Now, after we got a building created, we need to find a place to put it. And we did a site search, we developed all these criteria, some, if you were here at the, when we tried weighting all these criteria and figuring out how it would work. And in addition to doing a site search in 2014, we put our heads together about what we should do in 2015. The results of the site search are, are pretty dramatic, we looked at 11 sites, all of them will be suitable, but the ones to the left of that diagram are more suitable. So we, we are particularly interested in the first few, as you can imagine. By the way, if you are going to put up a building of that nature, the worst possible place you could put it is next to a hockey arena. Now Seattle made this mistake in putting a number of its, its attractive features sort of almost touching each other, such that if two of them are having events on the same night, you can't get near them because of traffic and whatnot. And the last thing we want when we're having a delicate ballet performance on the stage is a hockey fight, or, sorry, game next door. We don't want that.
So, I don't mean to interrupt, but could you just re, I can't, my eyes, I can't see what, could you just tell us what the three sites are?
Well, as a matter of fact, sir, with respect, madam, I don't think I can.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought they was on the board, I thought my eyes
No, we have not put the names
Oh, okay, never mind then. Sorry, I thought, I thought it was up there, it was just, I was blind.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Counselor Logan.
Well, isn't, but you are.
So, what do we do now? We want to maintain the momentum. In February and April, basically the next couple of months, we would be very grateful if the city would announce their intention to pursue this opportunity publicly, and then engage senior governments for funds. Funding for a building like this would have to come largely from senior governments, and then from major donors, I keep thinking of Manulife or the banks, they have all my money and probably yours too, and then of course, public fundraising among the citizens. Choosing the site, I think the site, the best site could be chosen within the next two or three weeks, if not that complicated, we've given it lots of thought, and some of you have given it thought as well. And we need to engage an illustrator to create more diagrams, such as you saw in the first slide, artist interpretations of how that building could be put on a particular site, depending on slope and other factors like that. And I'd like to hold a public meeting before the end of April, to engage the public and explain the vision that we have, and which I hope you will share. Now, June to December, develop the idea more and, and create a case for support that can be taken through the banks and Manulife and governments and whatever else. I'm very sorry I haven't mentioned May, my wife and I are going to be on vacation. That is true, that is true, but it was a mistake, I apologize for that. So here we are then, a request for, for continued support from council, confirm this project as a strategic economic development priority for the city. Engage senior governments, we'd like a little bit of money for our operations, and we'd like some limited access to Colwood's staff for advice. And then, really, what it boils down to, ladies and gentlemen, is you have a four-year mandate, I'll go, I'll get back to this, you have a four-year mandate, which you have the opportunity to actually create this building, and our question is, will you? And if you will, we will be working very hard to help you. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And I just want to acknowledge that we have Christine and Xana and Richard also in the audience, who were very much with the participant of what we've done thus far. So, any questions from council? Seeing none at this time, David, thank you very much. And that brings us into item number six, letter from Mayor Help City of Victoria. Council, we had, our previous council had committed to participating in whatever may come forward in the way of amalgamation, and this is a letter from the city of Victoria that has been circulated to all the municipalities in Greater Victoria, to basically set up some steps or terms of which that study may take place with the province. So I'm sure, council, that you've read the guidelines and, and the covering letter, and of which we have drafted one on behalf of the city of Colwood. We need your input, is this sufficient, and what would you like done? Counselor Martin?
Sure, I'll just make the motion that, help me, that we give permission for the letter that's before us to be signed by the mayor and submitted? Is that good enough, mercy? Or how, what would you, how would you like that motion to read? Yeah, reword that so I sound good.
Second, conversation, discussion, anybody? Seeing none, call the question all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? Next item is under New Business Planning and Land Use Committee, regarding Ocean Grove Update on Proposed Changes to the Conditions of Rezoning Development Memo. Staff? Evo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As part of the OCP Amendment and rezoning application for the Ocean Grove Development, council at a regular meeting held on January 12, 2015, directed staff to review timelines to Seaford Road improvements and report back to council prior to the public hearing. Staff worked with the applicant to make revisions to the Staff worked with the applicant to make revisions to the proposed development agreement. The applicant has agreed to construct the Seafield Road upgrades from Heatherbell to the end of the road on or before completion of 350 units, not 500 as originally proposed. Furthermore, the applicant has also agreed to provide security for each new unit in the amount of $9,000, whereas $7,000 is required as per the current agreement. These securities shall be returned at completion of the required works. In addition, construction traffic shall be prohibited to use Seafield Road for access egress to and from the subject property, and a temporary access off Heatherbell Road would be used. Staff recommended counsel direct staff to include the aforementioned items as conditions of rezoning number ARZET-14-003 for Ocean Grove, through terms included in a registered development agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments, staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, and this was an issue that was brought to us by both the Director of Engineering and the applicant, that on the report, the recommendation D, or, excuse me, B, as in Bob, references the collection of security for offsites. And at the end of it says, "Estimated Cost Completing All Required Offsite Works." Just want to specify that we're talking about collecting the security for all of the works, but they would be released as the stages of works are completed, not at the end of all the works. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Members of counsel, Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Worship, I'll move the recommendation.
Second.
Any further comments? Counselor Nalt?
I'm glad to see the securities will be taking place at building permit stage. I'm just wondering what form will these securities take? The last developer gave us securities and then went bankrupt, and they turned out not to be worth very much. I would not like to see that happen again, or any possibility of that. So what form will the securities take?
Do we have an answer?
Sure. Through the chair, the securities would take the form of either cash or irrevocable letter of credit that was auto-renewing, so that it would be secure in the sense that bankruptcy by the applicant wouldn't affect its viability.
Thank you, that would be adequate.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Can you just refresh my memory on Seafield improvements? Does Seafield improvement stop at Matilda, or does it continue right to the end of Seafield? And are we, it's basically a one-lane, Seafield is sort of right now, is the improvement that it would be a true two-way? And would we be putting sidewalks on Seafield? I'm just not sure what Seafield improvements mean.
Yeah, the sewer stops essentially, I guess, two or three houses towards Heatherbell from Matilda, because then all of the lots are serviced, even the big lot. But the other improvements don't, although they may be done ahead of this developer, by the developer of that large lot on Seafield, that could happen. And there's a sidewalk on one side of the road, yeah.
Sorry, just, yeah, just, sorry, just a follow-up. So, sorry, I'm confused. So, you come down Seafield, and right now, there's a, my goodness, there's a concrete barrier that's blocking so that people don't hit the sewer stand or something. So there's kind of a twist in Matilda, or, excuse me, in Seafield right now. So are we anticipating that it'll just be a straight road, and that will go from Matilda to Heatherbell with a sidewalk? Is that what I'm hearing, or I'm...
Yeah, it's just the sewer that wouldn't go all the way through.
Right, great, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, call the question on the recommendation, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Next one is 7.1.2, re the sale of southern 30 meters of Glen Karen Lane as part of the rezoning of 2128, 2132, 2138 Suk Road. Again, Evo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As part of the rezoning of 2128, 2132, and 2138 Suk Road, the applicant had proposed to purchase approximately 590 square meters of property owned by the city that is currently road right-of-way for and part of Glen Karen Lane. As part of the sale, a sale price was determined based on an appraisal. However, it has become clear that various underground services are located within the current road right-of-way, something that was not known at the time. A second appraisal determined a new sale price. Staff is recommending that counsel direct staff to revise the purchase and sale agreement to reflect the new appraised value, and authorize the mayor and acting chief administrative officer to ratify the purchase and sale agreement. Thank you.
Members of counsel, are you taking that one on? Who's taking on the recommendation, folks?
I'll move the recommendation, Your Worship.
Seconder?
Second.
Discussion, counsel? Seeing, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm still a little confused on, the reduction in the price was because...
There were various underground services located underneath the road right-of-way.
Right.
One of those was a water main that would have to be relocated. And furthermore, different service providers had requested a total start right-of-way width of seven meters. All this taken into consideration reduced the value of the land.
So, so there's a water main there, I'm just, I'm repeating it back so that I understand it clearly, there's a water main there that's going to need to be moved, and that's going to be moved at whose cost? City's cost or developer's cost?
It'll be moved at the developer's cost.
Okay.
But, of course, because it has to be done, and it wasn't anticipated at the time the original appraisal was done, it's reduced the appraisal of the land.
Okay, got it. I understand, I totally understand now, thank you.
Anything further? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. 7.1.3 Planner Report Regarding Callwood Performing Arts. I think that's you again.
Thank you again. The city engaged Schick, Shiner, and Associates in 2013 to continue work on the project planning activities for the Callwood Performing Arts Center project. They have now completed their work, and their final report is attached to the staff report. One of the results of the work that Schick, Shiner, and Associates has undertaken is the forming of the Westshore Performing Arts Center Committee, consisting of dedicated volunteers who will take the next step toward realizing the arts center. A report from the committee is also attached to the staff report. Staff is recommending that counsel direct staff to engage the Westshore Performing Arts Center Committee to determine the next step in the project, and report back to counsel with options. Thank you.
Need that mover and shaker?
I'll, sorry, no, I'll move it. Happy to move it.
Second emotion, and I just, I had a question.
Discussion, Counselor Day?
I'm just trying to find my highlighted spot, but in reading through the report, there it is, under the strategic plan, there was to be a preliminary fundraising outline, and I'm just wondering, is that happening now, or has it already been done?
If I may, I'd like to ask one of the committee members to answer that question.
Christine?
Right now, we're in the process of working on that, because we have an overall outline, where we would be approaching municipal, provincial, and federal government, and then approaching possible sponsors. And then, after we have raised a substantial portion, that we then go to community fundraising. But we're, from the advice that we've received from talking to certified professional fundraiser, we've learned that we should not be approaching anybody at this stage, or any businesses. We have to, we've been getting guidance in the background. So that's why you do not have actually a formal report on that yet. We were also advised that it was a good idea, first of all, to have a site before we started approaching fundraising possibilities too.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Christine.
And just one, in regards to the membership, it included ex-officio members being yourself as the mayor, and also a cultural planning consultant. And I'm wondering, is that a member of our planning staff, or is that something different? I'm just not sure I understood that.
Christine, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that was in reference to our consultant, Oksana Dexter, with Schick, Shiner, and Associates.
So if I may follow up on that, then, just, I'm just noting that we need to look at our terms of reference, I guess, for the membership on the committee, and I think we should have another ex-officio member, either from staff, or to help guide this forward.
Go ahead, Ian.
In 2014, counsel, the council members that were part of the decision may recall that myself, the Director of Planning, was made the staff liaison, or my delegate, in this case, Efo, is heading up this file on the staff side. So we are attending meetings and providing support in that sense. The terms of reference, you know, this is a non-statutory committee, so they're basically a group of volunteers that have come together for this project, and they could certainly modify the terms of reference now that Oksana's contract is over, so.
Good, go. Good. Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Question to finance, there is a $6,200 ask for 2015, and I'm wondering if that has been calculated, has that actually been worked into the budget? I understand we're still doing budget.
Yes, it is included.
Okay. And saying that, if it gets axed during budget, does that change our recommendation at all? Would it affect the recommendation? Well, anybody who wants to answer, you guys, staff? Thank you, I just wanted to ask it now, so that when it came to budget time, we had an answer.
Ian?
Just in terms of the specific question as to the, this recommendation, certainly I do not believe that whatever happens to budget would conflict with this recommendation. We would still be looking for options whether that funding was in place, but it would probably be very different options if it wasn't approved.
We have a mover and a seconder looking, then, to call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Moving forward into 7.2 Economic Development and Innovation Committee, Preliminary Resources for Economic Development Strategy Implementation Plan. Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Just getting to it. We had our very first economic development meeting. As you may or may not be aware, economic development was a priority for the previous council, and so the mayor had sort of began that process with Counselor Sullivan, and then I've sort of picked it up since then, and we had our first meeting. And basically, as we were going through it, we were basically looking at possible projects and things that will be a priority in the next four years, as we try and to improve our economic development. And you'll see in the next, that there's a significant ask at the next one. But this, this one, the motion was basically that, to provide a report to the Economic Development Committee, well, we did that, and expedite work on the funding of priority items, which we did at the last meeting, which was last Thursday, so we don't have that in front of the council yet. And also to reinforce that the previous council did support the concept of us having an economic development officer, but I thought it was important enough, since we have a new council onboard, to make sure that this council still sees that as a priority for 2015. So it was recommended that, by the committee, that an economic development officer position be created for 2015, and that appropriate funding be secured in the upcoming budget process. And I'll, I'm happy to make that motion, but also, just so you know, I believe we calculated it out, Ian, it would be roughly about $44,000 this year, and then I believe it's just over $80,000 for a full-time, full-year. And you'll see that in the budget asks, or, yeah, maybe I can look at finance.
I believe it's about $44,000 halftime for this year, and about $85,000, $88,000 for next year at full-time.
Thank you. So this motion, I guess, also, just to reinforce it, this motion is trying to make sure that we have a priority, so that when we go into budgeting, we've sort of made a decision if this is necessary or not, and so that we understand if we're going to keep it or cut it. So I've made that, I'll make that motion, that's there.
Second.
Discussion, counsel? Counselor Day?
If I can remember my question. Just, oh, I know. I was wondering where in the city's hierarchy this economic development officer is seen to fit? What department will they be in?
Right now, it's a Level 16 position, which falls under the same category as our communications person. And right now, it's positioned under planning, that planning would be supervising that, but we would definitely look at where that would fit best. One of my concerns is I just don't want planning to be overwhelmed, having to have a whole bunch of staff to supervise, but we're not exactly sure where that sits right now. But it will definitely, at this time, sit with planning, under that supervision.
Follow-up?
And just a quick follow-up, would that be a union position, a new position that we're creating?
Go ahead.
So the money in the budget would allow for that pay grade 16 position, which we feel is sufficient to entice a good crop of applicants. It could be determined down the road that counsel be given some options in terms of it being either a contract person or a union position. That is something that we can take a look at after the budget is dealt with.
And I would just say that I think the request here from Counselor Martin, as Chair of the Economic Development, is for a placeholder in the process for us to, you know, seriously consider what it means, because it does, it's not something that can be done off the side of anybody's desk in this, in what we have. We've reviewed, it's been thus far, you know, kind of bounced around a bit between admin, finance, and planning. But it needs to, you know, if we want to make any sort of serious effort, it was part of our strategic plan process, and we're going to have to make some commitments if we want to see some follow-through. And I think Counselor Martin's done a tremendous job already trying to kick-start this into a live entity. So that's the recommendation before us, and, you know, we have yet, we are meeting again on Wednesday for more conversation around budget, and we'll be getting some more of those details and information at that time. So it's before us now, folks, anybody else? Counselor Nalt?
I'm supportive of the idea of bringing it to budget, I'm really questioning the wording of the recommendation, because the recommendation is to create that position and secure budgeting for it. I think that prejudges the entire budget plan for the City of Callwood, which we haven't begun to seriously consider yet. So I would prefer if it said that the Economic Development Officer position be written into the 2015 budget for discussion, rather than say that it be approved and funding be found.
Is Ian there for discussion on Wednesday, is that, are we hitting that?
Yes, I just wanted to confirm that Counselor Nalt is correct, that we do have that in there as a separate item under what's called payroll supplementals with a separate analysis of that, along with a couple of other different positions that have come forward.
Counselor Nalt?
And a follow-up question to that, I understand the position is somewhere in the order of $44,000 for the, this fiscal year. What about support staff and other costs?
I'm going to ask the committee about that because I know we have had a number of other items that have come forward. Some of the items are within the Communications Manager's budget. And not being on the committee, I don't know if one of you could help me with that, but I know we have included items at your request.
I can jump in and if Counselor/Chair Martin wants to add, feel free. So in terms of what we looked at, at the committee level in terms of projects, there would be projects that really would provide the fodder for an economic development officer to work on with existing staff. So in that sense, there was some consideration given to the projects that they would be, you know, tasked with in the budget. In terms of extraneous costs and housing that person, we did not include an estimate for providing of, say, a desk and whatnot. I had considered that to be something that we could absorb into our existing office budgets, office supplies and whatnot.
Anybody else further on that? Counselor Nalt, did you have anything more?
I guess Eve, no.
Counselor Day?
I'm slow. I was just thinking through that and there's, there's been no amendment made to, to the motion. And I was just going to suggest that we should make an amendment because we, I think the intent around this table is to put it in the budget and, and seriously consider it. The intention isn't to say today, here's the final stamp of approval and, and let's get going. So I just think we need to change the wording so that it reflects what our true intention here is. And thinking on the fly.
You stole my, my thunder on that.
Sorry.
Oh, no, no, no. And I was just thinking that if it's the will of council and somebody else is going to have to do it, that the appropriate funding be prioritized in upcoming budget discussions instead of process considered?
Yeah. So I would be happy to move that funding for an economic development officer position be considered for the 2015 with appropriate funding for the upcoming budget process. Does that work?
Discussed in the upcoming budget process?
Help, Marcy, help.
Sure. I think that an economic development officer position be considered for 2015 and that the appropriate funding be discussed in the upcoming budget.
I think considered again.
Yeah.
Okay. So the amendment I'm proposing then is to change the words, instead of be created, be considered, and instead of be secured, be considered.
Secondor on the amendment? Any further discussion on the amendment? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. I understand where it's going. However, the previous council, and it was the previous council, previous council did offer the support that, that we prioritize this and said that this was a priority. But that was important to bring this back because we need to be very clear with this council. If we are supporting economic development and we want an economic development officer, this kind of leaves it back up to the committee, the whole, after the fact, once we look at the budget. For myself, I, I think this is, you cannot run an economic development table without a staff member. It's just a fact. And unfortunately, I guess it's sad because the rest of you are not aware of the amount of work economic development has put in place. And there is a lot of wheels that are going to be moving forward in this next year and none of it's going to happen if, if, I mean, I'm not going to let it happen because you can't, you can't demand staff do things that, that's just impossible. So I guess that's where I struggle with this is that if we're just going to say, yeah, we're going to consider it, well, there's not much point of me even brought it forward to you guys tonight. The idea was that, that we were going to discuss it and make a decision, is this smart or is this not smart from an economic development standpoint? I understand you have to look at the whole budget, but at some point you have to prioritize. You have to prioritize if you're going to have a department or if you're not going to have a department. It shouldn't just be because of, of finance. And listen, I am the most fiscally conservative person you're going to meet. So I guess it's, it's quite ironic that I'm fighting the exact opposite, so. But it's, I, I think it's a shame if we're just going to be sort of eh, we'll, we'll make a decision later. I think we need to at some point make a tough decision and decide either now or never. But I'm happy to let, to let it go and we'll make a decision down the road.
Counselor Day?
Thanks. I just wanted to be clear that I, I am supportive of the economic development officer position, but I think in keeping with our past practices on budget, I think we should make budget decisions with all the facts in our possession. So I'm, I'm only saying that I'm, I'm not willing to decide on my priorities without considering all of the priorities.
Anyone else? Call the question, all those in favor?
Excuse me? Sorry, you have two motions on the table right now.
On the amendment?
The initial one is still on the table, so you might want to vote on that one first.
Sorry, there should be an amendment on the table? The amendment was to change the verbs from be created to be considered and be secured to be considered?
So on the amendment, again, we'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Which then makes the one on, the original one replaced because it's amended? Yeah, so it's now the original emotion as amended. We can go that way. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? 7.2.2 Scheduling of Economic Development and Innovation Standing Committee Meetings. Counselor Martin? Happy Thursdays.
Yeah, thanks. We, being in the Economic Development Committee, are being economically sound by having our meetings at 3:00 PM, so we don't pay for overtime. So we'll be meeting on the Thursdays, last Thursday of the month at 3:00 PM, our standing committee. Third Thursday. That's right, so.
Are you sure now? Third Thursday?
I don't know, I go where I'm told. So that's when we're doing it. So I don't think we, that's just, I think it's just a motion to receive.
I think we need to implement it into our.
Second.
Whatever, so. Second? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Protective Services, Counselor Day?
Sorry, thank you. I'm just waiting for my little computer to catch up with me. At the Protective Services Committee meeting, Chief Kerry Smith gave us an overview of his report on the B.C. Fire Service Minimum Training Standards. The playbook, as it's been nicknamed by the fire services, establishes and describes minimum competencies required of firefighter roles. The Callwood Fire Department currently trains and operates as a full-service operations level department and meets the requirements as defined in the playbook with the exception of holding a policy statement. The financial implications of enacting the policy statement, which he indicated would be minor, are, it's small, and the career firefighting staff at the Callwood Fire Department do meet or exceed the requirements stated within the policy. So it was recommended, and I would so move, that council approve and enact the Callwood Fire Rescue Response Policy, which reads as follows. Whereas the Office of the Fire Commissioner has released the new firefighter training playbook, which establishes standardized service levels and training for all fire services in the province, whereas a policy statement is required from the governing organization describing the authority to operate and specify to a specific service level. And whereas the City of Callwood Bylaw Number 180 provides for the establishment and operation of the Callwood Volunteer Fire Department, also known as, known as Callwood Fire Rescue. And whereas the City of Callwood wishes to provide a full service level of response to the people and properties within the City of Callwood by Callwood Fire Rescue, now therefore the Council of the City of Callwood in open meeting assembled and acts as follows, Callwood Fire Rescue will operate and continue to train to the full-service operations level firefighter, providing a full spectrum of fire services as defined and amended from time to time in the British Columbia Fire Services Minimum Training Standards, structure firefighters competency and training playbook released by the Office of the Fire Commissioner in September of 2014, and that the mayor and chief administrative officer be authorized to sign the Callwood Fire Rescue Response Policy.
Secondor please?
Second.
Discussion Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Your Worship. I will support this and I would actually stack any one of our firefighters up against any career firefighter in the province. They're well-trained, well-respected, and they provide that same service at a fraction of the cost. And I wish the province good luck and when they're looking at the amalgamation study to determine the economic benefit of amalgamation, if they decided that losing our volunteer, our composite department was in the cards because they provide a fantastic value and a fantastic service. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Oops, back up. Ah, we're into 7.4 Finance and Admin, 7.4.1 Local Legends Movie Proposed Movie Event, Tuesday, March the 24th. It was referred from Heritage Commission. Who's taking the lead on this one folks?
That's Counselor Chong.
Aloha?
Sorry, I distracted her.
Yes, you did. I saw that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we discussed at the last Heritage Commission meeting that the videographer agreed that he could complete the project, which is the local legends movie. For a small segment, or that would include a small segment, highlight commercial for the website, as well as set up the premiere night for $1,000. We decided that this should be a special invitation only for the first event to ensure that there will be enough seating and we would see how it goes for the, for other events. And we, we decided that March 24th, 2015, at 7:00 PM would be a good time to hold it at the Callwood City Hall. And we also wanted to ask permission if it would be okay to hold it at the hall. And the recommendation is that council grant permission for the Heritage Commission to hold a movie premiere night in the Callwood Committee Room to view the Callwood Local Legends on Tuesday, March 24th, 2015, at 7:00 PM by special invitation to ensure there is enough seating for those who participate in the video, their families, council and staff, and some members in the community that have collaborated in the heritage initiatives.
Second?
Discussion Counsel?
Yes, we were thinking about having popcorn.
I know, I know staff and, and others have been working on this. Identifier, I know it's a very small amount of money, but are you asking as well for the $1,000 or is that already determined as to where it's coming from?
Yep, this will be taken from the budget, so we have $2,500 and it'll be $1,000 from that, so we'll have $1,500 left.
Okay. And then I am assuming that one has checked our calendar for the 25th of March to, or 24th of March to ensure that there's nothing that would need to be preempted. You have checked or you have not checked?
And I double-checked. No committee meetings.
Good. So we have mover and secondor, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? 7.4.2 Request for Early Budget Approval in Regards to the Relocation of the Pergolas that were before us at Committee of the Whole, February 16th. So Chair of that meeting was Counselor Logan, so I'm expecting that you will take that.
You betcha, Your Worship. Well, the city is getting, has been offered the two pergolas by the Royal British Columbia Museum. It was, it's a hell of a deal and something that's at the value of about $120,000. The stipulation from the museum was that we remove them from the site as soon as possible. So at our last meeting, we had some discussion as to what, what we wanted to do with them and where we wanted to put them. The initial thought was to look at the park and ride. In fact, that's how the, the motion was structured. But since then, it was felt that perhaps more thought and care should be put into the actual location. And so the thought is to at least temporarily move them to the public works yard so we can have those conversations and do some proper site, site work and, and planning in terms of locations. There was, there was a recommendation, and I will so move, but slightly reworded, and staff, please help me if it should be different, but that staff be directed to acquire the pergolas from the Royal British Columbia Museum, transport them via Nickel Brothers to the public works yard at a cost of $25,800 to be funded from gas tax. But I think it should be reworded a little bit differently than that and I'll defer to the Deputy Director.
Through the Chair, thank you. Counselor Logan, we, mic's on. We could, we could, we could just reduce it to $17,800 or we could leave the money in there because our quote is to, is for $17,800 to have them delivered here. The extra money was going to be to set up for the installation.
Yeah, and I think there is that desire to leave the funding there so we have some, some site preparation money.
If, that does give us the option, Counselor, to, to go through the public process and to actually install them if we can this year. The danger, of course, is that they can be put in the public works yard and forgotten about.
Correct.
So that will keep us moving.
Thank you.
That's a good idea to keep it there.
So it is to leave it as it is with the.
Yes.
Location changed only? Secondor please?
Second.
Any further discussion? Counselor Nalt and then Martin?
Yes, I, I'm supportive of moving them to the public works yard. My question is if we have to move them again to another site, are we going to need another $16,800?
Through the Chair, thank you for that, Counselor Nalt. The $16,000 had to do with the fact that there's, $17,800 had to do with the fact that we needed to move through four different jurisdictions. It will not be reduced down to half the cost. I think it would still cost us about $10,000 to move them again. That's just a ballpark because there's mobilization, demobilization.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you. I'm looking toward staff on this and I would actually prefer if we had a motion at some point that also specified at what point we're going to move it because I am totally terrified about us putting it in the public works and being forgotten. And we've got this $120,000 beautiful piece that's just sitting there year after year because people got distracted or it doesn't get moved. So I would hate for it to just sit there.
Through the Chair, I would suggest that we could probably have something, we could go through a public process, bring forward some ideas, go through a public process. I would say by the end of June, have a decision on where they should go. I think that is a reasonable amount of time. Gives us a fair amount of lead time. And I've spoken with our communications manager and she's on board with that idea. She didn't specify end of June, but that's me winging it.
Anybody else? I'm not sure how they're going to move these things, like, you know, what, how they come in or any of, of that. I know often in house moving and that sort of thing, they have to block them and, and do that kind of a thing. Is there any advantage or savings to be had if, if they, in the process of moving, can, you know, set them or like without taking them completely off of a device and whatever if we were acting. without taking them completely off of a device, and whatever, if we were acting quicker?
Thank you, Mary. Yes, what we've asked them to do is to, just, I'll back up a bit. These will be welded with some stabilizing bars on them to, to turn them basically into trailers. That can be, wheels can be put under, and they can be hauled.
Oh, okay.
And then they'll be brought here, and we've asked them not to disassemble the welding, so that will all stay in shape. So, there will be some, certainly some cost savings on that, but they'll be ready to move. They're, they're not going to be installed in any location here. They're going to be stored out of the way, and they'll be stored, ready to move again.
Good. All right. Anybody else? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? 7.4.3 Discussion, Counselor Cynthia Day, in regards to TAC, Representative UBCM First Nations Taxation Request for Feedback.
Thank you. This report was just released first in November, requesting feedback from local governments on the Union of British Columbia Municipalities First Nation Taxation Paper. And the, because of the election happening at that time, there wasn't a lot of uptake from local municipal governments, so that deadline has been extended to the end of this week. And also, there has been some work done on the item by the Treaty Advisory Committee to identify some, some potential areas of, of municipal concerns that, that municipalities may wish to comment on, and these are listed at the end of the email one through four. It, it says, "The paper makes suggestions to build on the recent positive history between First Nations and local governments in B.C., and to continue the strong working relationship between UBCM and the First Nation FNTC Treaty Committee." And the first recommendation is to promote and support collaboration and cooperation between the Tulow Centre of Indigenous Economics and Universities that support the Local Government Officers Association, such as Capilano Northwest and UVIC. And I can report that I did attend the opening for the Tulow Centre at UVIC. And two, to develop processes to remove First Nations from municipal boundaries on the request of First Nations to clarify service and representation responsibilities. Three, to consider a pilot project coordinated by the First Nation Task Treaty Committee and UBCM with non-Treaty First Nations, to directly participate in regional district governance, planning, services, and infrastructure. And number four, to consider other First Nation regional participation opportunities, such as those associated with hospital districts. And there is a long history of some distrust between hospital districts and First Nations, so that would be another area for an opportunity. And my recommendation would simply be that council requests staff to respond to UBCM with their suggestions on those areas of concern.
Second. Discussion, Counsel? Staff, are you prepared to be able to do some input on this, to fill the rest of this?
Sure, absolutely. And, Mary, I could go over some of the points that were developed in consultation with Counselor Day and other staff. And these focus on the points raised in the paper, as opposed to going into broader issues. So, so initial thinking on this, and this is what basically will form the basis of the report as we see it right now. Firstly, is that a meaningful consultation in development of a process to remove First Nations land from municipalities needs to include meaningful consultation with municipal governments. Secondly, that a one-size-fits-all approach may not be appropriate, and that, you know, in our case, we've got a well-developed entity in the form of TTAC that represents an alternative to a regional, regional district-only approach to coordinating folks. And then also, as Counselor Day mentioned, that we would like to make reference to other issues that have already been raised in the draft interest paper.
Good, thank you. Secondor on your motion we have?
I recite.
Yep, so, call the question, then. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? We are now moving into bylaws. Bylaw number 1563. Before we get into this, staff, this is the one correct that was at issue from the meeting of February the 10th. And so, do we need to, and I'm looking for direction here, do we need to make any rescinding motions to the, for that from February the 10th, to restart this, or we just back up off of second to first and carry on? What's, what's the procedure here, folks? Because that one kind of cut us off guard, in that we needed, and for the benefit of those in the audience who need more clarity, that particular, because it's an OCP amendment, needs to have the majority of all of council-elect, not just council-present. Looking out, staff?
My understanding is that the first reading, the first and second reading of the OCP bylaw are basically nonexistent, because it, it technically failed at first reading, and then the second reading was, wasn't valid.
Didn't.
Correct. So, I believe in this case, council could re-vote on first and second reading for that bylaw without a rescinding motion.
Okay. So, then, then with that, we will proceed with looking for, we need first and second readings on, on this one, folks?
Move introduction.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Move second.
Second, second.
Discussion? Counselor Knoll?
I've been carefully considering this development proposal. There are a few things about it, well, there are very few things about it I like. I like the fact that there has been commercial added. What I dislike is that Callwood loses any chance at all to build a second reasonable access through the lagoon area. If we allow this to go ahead, we will have probably in excess of 1,000 homes using the Heatherbill Ocean Boulevard intersection. That's a bad intersection to start with. It's in an awkward place with an awkward corner, and downhill. I think we're building up for major traffic problems there. I also dislike, I measured the amount of road area on the new plan. There is about 33% more road in this plan than in the previous plan. I counted the number of buildings in the old plan and the new plan. There are now about 100% more buildings than were in the original plan. The number of units is up by 210, and the minimum lot size to be created is now going to be .03 hectares, making this the smallest lots, I believe, in all of Callwood. I think we have one other place that allows lots that small, and that's down from the subdivision area in the previous plan by, the original was two hectares, was the smallest lot that could be created. I dislike the idea of single-family detached housing. There are fewer onsite improvements, so what we're essentially approving is 707 new units and 1,800 meters, square meters of commercial site, with fewer offsite improvements, a poorer road network, and no reasonable possibl, no reasonable possibility of improvement of that road. We are also totally throwing out the original OCP for this area, which was supposed to be hillside and shoreline. The hillside and shoreline guidelines in our OCP call for 10 units per hectare. We are proposing 42 units per hectare. That makes the OCP guidelines total waste. What we're building here is the city center, not a, not a hillside ocean shoreline development. So, I will not be supporting this, and I will look forward this, to this coming to public hearing, so the public will have their say on this. Thank you.
Anyone else?
And I guess just, thank you, Chair. Following up on the, on the roads, I think, I just need to hear this again. I've already asked engineer and planning departments, but I think it's also important for the people to hear, is how, even though we don't have that through road from the last plan, I think it's from Seafield to Goldfinch, how the roads are still planned to absorb the extra 200 units with the new plan. Staff?
A, a two-lane road can take 12,000 vehicles per day, and the, the, the total number of units coming out of that, of cars or vehicles coming out of that development, and the adjacent developments in a day will be well below that. Excuse me. There are two ways out of the, of that particular development. There's Goldfinch, and there's also the, the access onto Heatherbill. The access onto Seafield will remain until council actually closes that piece of road, and the developer buys it. And it's, it's unknown if that would ever happen. But even if there were only two exits out of the development, that would still be more than adequate to handle what would be in a peak hour, something like 400 vehicles. Excuse me.
It's an emotional thing, Marty. I understand.
Don't make him choke. Follow-up? Counselor Chong?
Second, the sweet little take care of.
You're good? Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Worship. Well, I'm supporting this, realizing that there is a different fiscal reality out there than, than there was when a Quattro came before us. And that was an ambitious project to begin with, with lofty goals, great goals, but lofty goals, and, and there was lots of money out there. The, the times have changed. I quite like the road layout personally. I think it's better, and I like the mix of uses. And I think the mix of uses is something that every planner has encouraged us to, to adopt since, since I've been around. So, I think we need to, to get real when we're looking at the, the reality these days. That site looks unattractive right now. You know, it's been excavated, it's overgrown with broom. It does not look attractive, except for those parts that are already developed. So, I think any work down there is a positive step in the right direction. And considering some of the thoughts, some of the plans that were submitted previously, I think this, this is a, a huge leap in quality compared to what we had seen proposed before. So, you know, I think, you know, if we want to see that site left, follow, and, and let to, to develop to the broom, then, then we should defeat this. If we want to see it proceed and actually improve the neighborhood, I think it should be approved. And that's, that's where my thought process is coming from. Thank you.
Counselor Day?
Thanks. No surprise that, you know, I, I, I'm not happy with small lots and small, small lack of access on our roadways. And I don't think that the economic argument is a good one. I think we need to design good communities and do the right thing, regardless of whether that's cost-efficient to do at this point in time, or if, if sometimes you have to wait. There was a lot of years when, after that area was originally clearcut. I think it was clearcut in 93, and might have been 95. But it, it's been a long time coming, and so I, I don't think that accepting anything less than what we believe to be the right fit for our community is prudent, because eventually, you know, real estate always does improve over time. At least, that's what they tell us, and certainly has been the case. And small lots and, you know, tightly packed car parks, and they, they don't make a happy life over the long term. So, those are my reasons for, for not supporting the development. It just hasn't met my criteria for making Callwood a better place to live.
Anyone else? Counsel Martin?
Yeah, I'm going to be supporting this. I, I, I have to be honest. I struggle with the fact that this did go through planning, and, you know, it, after planning, it came to us. And if there were changes in things that should have occurred, it should have occurred at the planning stage in the planning committee. And I struggle when I, we have a vice chair and an alternate on planning who are voting against something that's coming towards this table. And I don't think it's a, a very positive message to our developing committee when, when that sort of thing happens. I think this, this should have been addressed, and it will be addressed through public hearings as well, but it should have been addressed at, at the planning stage, and things should have been resolved at that point versus this coming to this table this evening. And I, I, I think we have to think long-term as well, and what is this, what is this saying to our community in the future? If, if we can't even vote on something that our committees are suggesting that, that we support. So, that, that's where I'm coming from with this.
Thank you. I'm not a fan of small lots, so I hear your sensitivities, members of council, who feel in that. However, you know, that's a unique pocket of our community. I look at it not in isolation, but as part of our greater whole, and that it offers an opportunity of diversity in there, where we can have perhaps some younger families or senior families, you know, moving in and out of those smaller, less expansive lots and, and buildings. And almost can see people moving in there and moving around in there as their life and, and time goes on. So, I will be following through on support on this. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion does carry? So, that, that completes second on 8.1. We need third reading only for bylaw number 1549, 8.2 Highway Closure and Disposal bylaw number 1549, in regards to 2014 Glen Karin Lane.
Move third.
Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? 8.3, bylaw number 1560, final reading, Callwood Sign bylaw number 1988, amendment number 26, regarding electronic message center signs.
Move final.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Motion to move in camera?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? I had to break out from there, folks. I had to break out from there, folks. It's off?
No, no, it's, we're not...
It is filming right now.
We're not in camera right now, right?
Oh, okay. That council acknowledged that the Callwood official community plan, bylaw number 999, 2008, amendment number nine, Ocean Grove guidelines, bylaw number 1563, 2015, currently granted first reading only, has been considered in conjunction with the city's Callwood five-year financial plan, CRD's liquid waste management plan, and the solid waste management plan, and considers them to be consistent. Move or a second or?
It's moved. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Need second reading of bylaw number 1563?
Move second reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Now we can have motion to move in camera?
No, don't anybody try and re-press. I understand.
Next time, feel free to wave and jump and dance and whatever over there.
Do your job. Winner, winner, chicken dinner, that one.
Head was probably down.
I'd just like to apologize on behalf of everyone involved. And we'll look to setting this up so it's very clear next time.